Hello and welcome. This is the Town of South Kingstown Town Council Regular Session. The date is Monday, July 12th, and the time is 7:30. And I'm going to ask for the three Boy Scouts that we have, our Eagle Scouts, to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could come forward to the center. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I was going to say not to move too far because I think we're going to move you guys up first in the meeting, but we'll just go through the roll call, please, Dale.
President Fogarty.
Here.
Council Vice President Eddy.
Here.
Councilwoman McAtee.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
Councilwoman Whaley.
Here.
All members present.
Okay, and next we'll have the approval of the minutes of the previous meetings from the meeting of June 28th. Their motion?
I move approval of the meeting for June 28th.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next is from the Regular Session, June 28th.
I move approval of the minutes of the Regular Session for June 28th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next is the Consent Agenda. Is there anything anybody would like to remove from the Consent Agenda? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next what we're going to do is we're going to move up. Our three Eagle Scouts can come forward. And I know that Carol and Ella are at a presentation for some of the Eagle Scouts. And I apologize because we're not streaming live, we're having a little technical difficulty, so you're not going to be on TV. I feel very badly about that, I'm sorry. But this is under New Business Item A. Also B and C. And Seth Noon, our other Eagle Scout, is, I believe, I guess, on his way already to the Merchant Marine Academy, so unfortunately Seth is not going to be with us. But I'm going to read the proclamations that were given to these three Boy Scouts, and I'm just going to insert what each three did and continue on reading the whole proclamation. So, resolution affirming proclamation presented June 26, 2010, to Benjamin Jackson, Ryan Kelly, and Charles Michael Matthews. And I'll do Benjamin first. Whereas Benjamin Jackson, a member of Troop 44, Mattoonik, and entering his senior year at South Kingstown High School, has devoted his time and energy to complete the requirements of and participate in such a worthwhile organization as the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas Ben, in his quest to achieve the designation of Eagle Scout, he led a troop hatchery demonstration, excuse me, trout, sorry, troop, close, trout hatchery demonstration at Cross Mills and designed and built new signs at the Mill Pond Reserve for the South County Conservancy. And Ryan, in his quest to achieve the designation of Eagle Scout, he designed and built two new sandboxes at Mattoonik Elementary School for the enjoyment of all the students who attend there. And Charles Michael Matthews, his quest to achieve his designation of Eagle Scout, he cleaned and repaired the Historical Cemetery, Number 50, and at the General Stanton Monument by historic Wilcox Tavern in Charleston, Charlestown. And whereas, all these gentlemen have showed persistence and determination in their efforts to complete chosen service projects and earned this prestigious award, evidenced by their commitment to high ideals of scouting. And whereas, they attained their highest and most prestigious, prestigious, excuse me, award in Boy Scouting, the Eagle Scout Award, bringing pride to themselves and honor to Troop 44, Mattoonik, their families, and their community. May this be a prelude of future dedication to purpose and service until they accomplish all their goals they are seeking. Now therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of South Kingstown, do hereby extend our congratulations for a job well done and best wishes for successes in all future endeavors. Congratulations, gentlemen. Very nice job. I hope you enjoy your proclamations. And tell all your friends, because we like to do the Eagle Scouts. We'd like to see more and more of them become Eagle Scouts. Oh, and Seth, and let me just, Seth, I should read what Seth did, I apologize since he's not here. Seth, in his quest for the designation of Eagle Scout, he built a bridge and repaired the trails at the Mill Pond Preserve for the South County Conservancy. Very nice, very nice job. Thank you, gentlemen, for everything you did. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve New Business Item A, B, C?
I move approval of New Business Item A, B, C, and D.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion on that? I didn't think so. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we'll go back now to licenses. And we have License Item A, a resolution granting victoling and dance license to Roadie Joe's LLC, 515 Kingston Road, Wakefield. The application is by Craig Cello, managing member, 1725 Mendon Road, Cumberland, Rhode Island, and this is a new license application. Is Craig here? Okay. Or John Kenyon?
Yes, good evening. I'm John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant. Essentially, we're here tonight for a couple of requests, transferring a Class B liquor license, the victoling license, and the dance license from Cellos of South County, Inc., to Roadie Joe's LLC. The Cellos family has done some reorganization. The Roadie Joe's LLC is owned by three of the four relatives that own the prior entity. So the ownership in all this is staying virtually the same. The operation's going to stay the same as it currently is. And Craig Cello is here tonight, if you have any questions to him on this part of it.
Okay, all right. Does anybody have any questions for Craig? I guess we probably do want to see what his thoughts are on the dancing.
Traditionally, the council would hold on the license until you deal with the transfer. As long as the transfer would be in place, then you would go back to the license itself. So I think that what you should do is to open the public hearing under the 7A and place on the record the information that John just conveyed.
Okay. Well, please add on the record, John, I'm going to open up public hearing. I might as well just stay there, so, because we'll do this. Dale is back. Okay, so we're going to go to the public hearing. A public hearing relative to the application for transfer of license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingstown in accordance with the general laws of 1956, as amended as follows, Class B victular liquor license, transfer of a Class B victular liquor license from Cellos of South County, Incorporated, 515 Kingston Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, by Craig Cello, Vice President, to Roadie Joe's LLC, 515 Kingston Road, Wakefield, by Craig Cello, member of, for the first floor dining areas, and as further defined in the site plans on file in the Town Clerk's office. Said transfer is contingent upon the issuance of certificate of good standing from the Rhode Island Division of Taxation, compliance with all town ordinance and regulations, the payment of any municipal taxes, and user fees and arrears to the town, the correction of any fire code violations, and the satisfaction of all claims. And I'm going to open the public hearing, but I want to see if there's any communications, Dale, with this, regarding this public hearing.
Application dated July 2nd from Paul J. Pozano Esquire, on behalf of Rhode Island, distributing, objecting to the transfer for indebtedness by Cellos of South County in the amount of $10,324.93.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to open this up, and why don't we start with that one, John? We'll do the public hearing for the transfer.
Sure. Once again, I'll restate that the reason behind the transfer, requesting a transfer from Cellos of South County, Inc., to Roadie Joe's LLC. There's been some reorganization in the family. There are currently four shareholders and officers in Cellos of South County, Inc. Three of those are the members for Roadie Joe's LLC. So it's going to be virtually the same ownership, same operation. And Craig can maybe go over and explain the reason for the transfer and also if there's any operational changes.
All right. And I'm going to ask you to speak into the microphone, since we don't have, oh, we do have video now. But anyways, we can't relip.
We've got the fan back.
And we've got the fan, so just to be, make sure everybody at home can hear it, so. So you've had, if you want to tell us a little bit about what's going on with the structure, Craig?
I mean, as far as the transfer from Cellos to Roadie Joe's? We've been in this location for approximately 17 years, and for us, it's been a very seasonable restaurant down here compared to our others back in, you know, further north. So we wanted to try to get to a restaurant that would probably give us year-round business. And especially with the economy, we really saw a downturn at this location compared to the ones further north. So we created Roadie Joe's, figured we'd capture year-round business with the younger crowd for the winter months and then the summer time coming. We still kept the family business, we're still a family-oriented, you know, restaurant. We still maintain a lot of our same customer base.
Okay.
And as far as the liquor service area, you're not looking for any change to the liquor service area? And we submitted copies of the letter of good standing from the Secretary of State along with the tip certification and the food safety manager certification. We understand that if the transfer is approved, it would be subject to the issuance of the letter of good standing from the Division of Taxation. And we did receive a copy of the objection, that's just an open, ongoing account, and we'll make sure that we have a release before the transfer is finalized.
Okay. Any questions for the gentleman? We'll start with Jim and move down to Polly next.
I'm not trying to get off the subject here, but is there any understanding between the Cello family and the Saravos that we could get the buffer that was agreed to with pine trees as well as a stockade fence completed? Is there any contract we should know about, any ill will between the landowner and yourselves, why that hasn't been done, or who, I guess I should ask who's responsible for it?
Denise Saravo is responsible for that, and there are no issues between us, we have a very good relationship.
Okay, so that's on their, the Saravos.
Yes.
Your understanding it's their responsibility.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Polly?
Yes, so my understanding is that that bill will be paid before we move forward, it will have to be. Is that correct?
You're talking about the release?
Yes.
Yes.
It will be. I noticed in one of the local papers that it was Roadie Joe's Saloon. That's not the name of your restaurant, is it?
Yes, it is.
It is Saloon.
Yes, it says it on the sign.
It doesn't say it on anything we've received. I think of Saloon as being different than Roadie Joe's, that's all we have on our information.
LLC, yes. I don't know the reason for that, I couldn't tell you.
Would you think about dropping the word Saloon?
Well, we'd rather not. This is a restaurant that we've put a great deal of time and money into, and there's not just going to be one, we're hoping to do several.
Then why don't you put Saloon in the advertisements that you use when you send information to us?
What do you mean in the advertisements?
In the statements you send us, it's always Roadie Joe's LLC.
Well, that Roadie Joe's LLC is the entity which owns the business. The menu that we submitted does have Roadie Joe's Saloon.
But it's doing business as Roadie Joe's LLC.
I believe it's Roadie, which is, are you talking about South County, Cellos of South County, Inc., DBA, Roadie Joe's?
I mean, we've never received anything that had the name Saloon in it, and I just think there's a different connotation to that than... It says, you have to go on this application, Roadie Joe's LLC, DBA, Roadie Joe's.
Right, and that, I prepared the application.
I'm just telling you what's...
Right, I was unaware of the Saloon at the end of it. It was always just Roadie Joe's, so I filled everything out as Roadie Joe's. It wasn't any...
And I read everything as Roadie Joe's.
It wasn't any idea to hide the Saloon.
So I was surprised when I saw the advertisement that it was a Saloon, that's all. Okay.
Polly, any other questions from the council? Carol?
Yeah, you know, I might be going a little off-topic here, but we do get some complaints from people on MacArthur, is it Boulevard?
Yes.
Boulevard, about noise, not coming from inside, but out in the parking lot. You know, I'm not saying it rises to the level of a nuisance or anything like that, but I did hear from a couple who lives down there, and they have young children, and they say on Friday and Saturday nights, it wakes their kids up at night, especially with the warm weather, I suppose, you know. People tend to linger outside more often. If there's anything you could do to, you know, keep a better control, so, I mean, I know it's difficult, but, you know, address these people, just, they come to us, and that's why I want to tell you.
If I may, we run a very strict business. We have for over fifty, almost 55 years. And at this location over here, first of all, if that's happening, we'll do our best to try to stop it.
Great.
But as you know, as soon as we shut down, the police are automatically in our parking lot, we have 10 minutes.
Right.
To get everybody out. And to my knowledge, that has not been a problem up to this day.
I just heard from a couple yesterday that live like four houses down from your establishment, and I just wanted to pass it along, you know.
No, I appreciate it, and I will bring that to their attention.
And the other thing about the, I guess we also keep hearing about the bushes that were supposed to be put up near the fence, and I know that isn't necessarily our issue, but if you talk to the Saravos, you know, if we could just make everybody happy, that would help our situation, your situation.
Okay.
You know, peaceful coexistence.
Might help with the sound, too.
We're actually, the Saravos are going to be coming in to the planning board for a development plan review for the area that was cleared there, and the fence, and the bushes. We're actually hoping to do this all at once, but the plans for that were taken longer than expected, so we went forward with this, and then we'll be back in front of the planning board, I assume, for that.
What's the timetable, John?
Pardon me?
Are you looking for a parking lot expansion, John?
For park, where the, right now, they're not permitted to park in that area that was cleared. They would come in and ask for parking lot expansion at the same time as any landscape offering and that sort of thing.
What's the timetable, John?
Probably in the next couple of months.
And you're talking about the area that's stoned right now, where there's gravel and stones?
Yes. Yes.
Hello? Did you have anything?
Hello, is that, yeah? No.
I'm sorry, Steve, the root of that would be planning first, advising zoning, or they go to zoning for that?
I believe it's only, it would only be going through the planning board because it would be a site review.
Okay.
And I was just saying, I understand that Cellos have been in business for 55 years, but again, you're going for a different population or a different crowd with this whole Saloon issue, and I've gone into the restaurant, I've read Roadie Joe and who he is and the whole makeup of it, so you're going to have a different population, so it is going to be a bit of a noisier population, so again, that's something to, I guess, to expect in a, with a Saloon tavern type change. So again, we're just trying to keep everybody happy in that area, I mean, so everybody can coexist, so just...
I understand.
Yeah, it is, it is something, and I, and a friend of mine lives down there, too, who said it's gotten a little noisy. She's not bad about it, but, you know, she's mentioned it.
Okay.
So just something to keep in mind, because we don't want to have, we don't want to have to pull anybody in or have, you know, but, you know, if there needs auxiliary police, you know, there's something that you can talk to the chief about that versus, you know, this, you know, mounting to something further than that down the road. We don't want that to happen either, all right? Trying to make everybody exist. So this is an open public hearing, so if there's anybody in the crowd who has any questions and would like to come forward and ask questions regarding this liquor transfer?
Is this also a new dance?
Well, we can go back to the dance, this is more, right now, we're in the public hearing for a liquor transfer of the license. That's what this is about right now.
Is there an acceptable decibel level? Because I'm one, I'm one of the residents that has, is right on the border there, where the cars...
You're going to, you're going to...
Sorry.
You have to, yes, please, first, you've got to state your name for the record.
Oh, David Hannigan, 57 MacArthur Boulevard. I actually talked to Mr. O'Neil and Ms. McAtee.
Hi, David.
Yesterday. With the expansion of hours, it has gone from a family restaurant, now it's a Saloon, different crowd.
Yes.
College crowd. The article, when they said they were going after that college crowd, mentioned they wanted the muse crowd, they want that loud, college-age people. What I'm trying to get at is, if they're going to be open seven days a week now till seven, till 1:00 a.m., is that with the liquor license?
That's what the statute is, yep.
Can we just voice a concern? I would like to go on the record, say, you know, it has been noisy over there. We have called the police several times. And if it's Saravos that need to clean that up, I guess we have to address that when they come before the council for the parking. But for the restaurant side, we need to try to keep the patrons a little quieter, especially in a residential neighborhood, especially when they're going out and driving away at the end of the night at a little bit faster pace than they would during the daytime.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you for your concern. And when they do go, that would be in front of the planning board when they, when they talk about the thing, so something to keep in mind, and, okay. All right, is there anybody else who'd like to come forward? Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name is Bradley Wilson, and I'm representing my mother, Elizabeth Wilson, that lives at 39 MacArthur Boulevard, and she also owns the house that abuts the fence that was put up at 45 MacArthur Boulevard. If, if Roadie Joe's had a little bit of pull to get that fence up, we thank them very much. There has been some noise problems. My sister has called once or twice. To their credit, this summer has been very good, but our concerns are when the crowd comes back from URI, and it does get a little bit noisy back there and whatnot. We're just hoping that we can still be good neighbors. When we've lived there, my mom has lived there for 54 years, when it was Cellos, they closed at 10 o'clock on Sunday night, and they closed on Fridays and Saturdays at 11:00. Plus, we had a nice buffer zone, so we never even noticed the restaurant, and it was great. We hope that we can get that back a little bit, as far as getting a buffer zone back there a little bit, and have the same type of relationship that we've had over the years. We, like, like I've heard before and stuff, we all want to be good neighbors, and we want to be good between residential and business, and my friends have told me that it's very good, and it's, the people have been going over and eating. So I just wanted to go on record saying that with the change of hours and stuff, it looks like to me that they go more towards a bar-oriented area than a family restaurant area. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this? Okay, if not, see if we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Now, what would the council like to do?
How do you feel? I think that everyone is trying very hard to see that this is a success, and the changes are difficult because it is a residential neighborhood. But I think Cellos, the people at Cellos, and I've been there several times, it's still a great place to eat, it always was, but they are adding on a new, whole new group of people, and they're apt to be noisier people. But I think that they have indicated that they are willing to work with the neighbors, and hopefully they will do everything they can to make it worthwhile. And we all want them to succeed, we want businesses to do well in the area, so we wish them well, and we hope that they are sincere when they say they will do everything they can to make the neighbors happy, too. That's my feeling, so I would be for it, certainly.
I would second that, and I would agree, and the opportunity to complete the good relationship will obviously come up before the planning board here in a few months, and I think that would really cement a very solid neighborhood relationship. So I'll second the motion.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say, Mr. Cello, if you could just keep communication open, I'm pretty, I'm sure you probably know both of these men, David and Bradley, and if you could just keep communication over, with them, and figure out how you can alleviate some of their concerns, that would help you and them, and...
And us.
And us. But, you know, we want, obviously you're concerned about it, and, you know, they took their time out to come tonight, so, but I just wanted to say that.
Okay. Anybody else? No? I'm sorry, it's been moved and seconded. No other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor for the approval? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we'll go back to License Item A, a resolution granting the victoling license for dance, dance license to Roadie Joe's LLC 515, application by Craig Cello, managing member, from 1725 Mendon Road, Cumberland, and this is a new application, I think they came forward, I don't know if you wanted to come up and ask a question about the dancing while you were here, David? And if John, you wanted to address?
Yes, you do.
We want to give proper credit.
David Hannigan. As to the type of music that they're going to be playing, is it going to be a techno, where you're going to be, the windows are going to be rattling late at night, or, you know, you know, my kids are going to be doing the cabbage patch in the living room at 11:00?
You've got to speak into the microphone.
Sorry?
Talk to us, not to Mr. Cello.
I'll hit him up afterwards. I just want to know what type of music they're going to play. If it's going to be a loud, you know, bass-driven thing where it's going to rattle windows around the neighborhood, or, you know, it's going to be something different. And it's all going to be indoors, there's going to be no outdoor venues or anything? It's going to be no outdoor venues or anything along those lines?
I hope not.
Okay. I'm going to go back over there now.
Okay, John, you want to address that?
Yes, they currently have a dance license, and they're not looking to change anything with other than the transfer of it. So I'm not sure what type of music they play now, but it's going to be, it's not going to be any different.
Okay, so, but it's not the bands, it's not, is it, they don't have bands in there, it's just more like the piped-in music? That's what I recall from before, right? Yeah, it's like the radio kind of, not radio, but, go ahead, Carol.
Ms. Kenyon, this is just a transfer because they're changing the makeup of their ownership, right? It's like an extra family member, is that how it goes?
Their, one family member is, is leaving the entity.
Okay, so it's gone from four to three?
Exactly.
So we're really not changing the licenses, what I want to make clear to David and anybody else who's interested. We're just, it's just a different makeup of ownership, and it's the same license they always had.
That's correct.
Which we gave not too long ago, yeah. So it shouldn't be, you shouldn't notice any difference music-wise. Go ahead, please come forward.
Bradley Wilson from MacArthur Boulevard.
Okay.
The way I understand it now is, the liquor transfer will be included with the dance? Are they separate? Will they have to renew the dance, or are they going to be all together, or?
That, they just, we just transferred the liquor license in the open public, and this is another...
Okay, so they are separate.
They are separate licenses, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Going back to, and I know, going back to reports from our local newspaper and stuff like that, at one time, the ownership at Roadie Joe's stated that they may be having a, adding a deck and things like that, or, we don't know anything about that or what's going on. And the only reason I bring that up tonight is because they brought up a thing saying, well, down the road a little ways, we're going to present changes to the parking lot and try to widen it. Well, are we going to widen it and make it bigger and put a deck, too?
Nancy, a planning board, is there any such thing? Or Jim, or Steve?
If they were going to change the liquor service area...
They'd have to give us a whole new...
They would have to get an amendment on the special use permit, and they would have to get an affirmation from the council on that type of a change. So if, in fact, they were looking to expand the service area or to have outside service, it would require it going through a special use permit and council review and approval.
So it would be advertised and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I was just seeing if there was, if they've seen anything, and that would have to definitely come in front of us, any change like that. I don't know if that's what they're planning, but right now, we have no knowledge of any of that. of that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions from the council? I don't have any.
I guess it won't be folk music. Anyway.
Kumbaya.
Kumbaya, yes.
No, no, it will not be. Okay, do I have a motion then?
I move approval of License A.
Second.
Moved to second, and any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next we move on, no, you're welcome. Next, we move on to communication items. A communication dated July 7th from Judd Nuzum, Jude, excuse me, Nuzum, proposing a veterans' tax exemption for motor vehicles is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs. What would the council like to do on this item? If Mr. Nuzum, you are here, if you wanted to discuss your letter at all, will come forward with it? If you have anything you'd like to add?
My name is Jude Nuzum, there's nothing really to add, I just think that we have veterans in this town, we currently give them $126.01 in tax relief on their personal property, and with the change in automobile tax that has happened in Rhode Island, where the state is no longer exempting the first $6,000 of vehicle value, they've cut it down to $500. My proposal is that the town of South Kingstown recognize veterans by giving them an exemption of $6,000, an additional $5,500 to put them back even with what it was, and on one vehicle. The impact of that would be about $100, and I'm a veteran, you know, $100 is $100, but for a lot of people, for a lot of veterans, you know, times are tough, and $100 may mean the difference between paying no tax on their automobile and paying $100, so, I think it would be a gesture on the part of the town that would be appreciated and very appropriate. Thank you.
Jim?
Mr. Nuzum, I couldn't agree more, I wish the economic situation were a lot better, but I won't fall on that excuse. I would like to see something done, I don't know if it's the first $5,500, maybe $2,500, $3,000, $50, $60 here or there, means a lot, and it's quite a thank you to our veterans. We talked about this earlier, if we, we're looking at roughly $100,000 that we have to take away from our tax levy, really, as Steve can talk to the situation later, we're adding $100,000 of increased taxes that others in this community have to pay. Frankly, I wouldn't mind paying it to our veterans, I do agree that there should be even somewhere of a number, a little short of what you're asking for, better than what we do now. We sit on a lot of money in this town, but that makes us, we have quite a cash reserve, which I know Steve protects and this council protects very strongly, helps our bond rating, keeps us strong financially, it's there to weather us through tough times, and these are tough times, and I wish we could find a way to find that $100,000 in our reserves, our undesignated balances, to move this forward. I don't know if this is going to involve enabling legislation, I don't know if there's a way around this, I don't know if we have to do it in the next budget year, 11-12, not 10-11, that may be the route we have to take, and frankly, I'm glad you brought this up because I've never received more phone calls than I have on this vehicle tax that the state has passed down to our citizens, and there are going to be some cities and towns in the state that waive that exemption, eat it, take it out of their own reserves, there are others that are pushing the limits of the property tax cap, there's no easier answer for this. We are a wealthy town, maybe we should have considered both improved veterans exemption as well as picking up some of the taxable property, excuse me, automobile vehicle property tax that we now have to place on our citizens, and what concerns me more than anything else, this new vehicle tax over above the $500 really hurts the poor, hurts our farmers who happen to have a lot of licensed vehicles, tractors, whatnot, lying in their yards, might have $1,000, $2,000, $3,000 of value, and of all the folks who earn the least, it's them, and of course, the poor. This is, I certainly don't welcome this, and I think maybe these are times that we have to consider using some of our cash balances in a future budget, so, that's where I am.
As Jim said, we did discuss this in the work session, and Jim summarized where we stood, and we all feel very strongly we'd like to give a lot more to our veterans, they've done a lot for us. We do, as you know, give the $126.01 tax exemption. Our feeling on this was that this is something not for this year's budget, and this is something we might want to look into in another year, but rather than do something like this, we might look at giving more money the way we do now, because not every veteran has a car, and we would like to make it certainly fair for all veterans. But, yeah, we'd like to do it, but the budget has been approved now, and it would take an enabling legislature, legislation from the, from our legislature in order to do it this year on this budget.
Okay. Anybody else? Any comments?
Steve, doesn't it require, I think we spoke about this before, but it requires enabling authority from the General Assembly for us to do this?
That's correct. The existing legislation we have sets the value of the tax credit at $126.00 for veterans, widows of veterans, it sets it at $378 with Gold Star parents, 410 with XPOWs and service disabilities at 252. At the current time, the tax exemption program for veterans and dependents includes about 1,225 participants, and the tax relief that's provided amounted in the current year, 10-11 year, current year, to approximately $155,000. So, you're already providing tax relief of $155,000 on the veteran-related exemptions. If we were going to change that, we would need to have an enabling act presented to the General Assembly and approved at that level to enable the local ordinance to be able to amend our existing practice. And as Polly indicated, there's several ways that this could be done, it could be done with motor vehicles, or it could be done just increasing the overall value for the veterans. I think it's important also to look at what the value of exemption for veterans is statewide, and I can get that information for the council prior to the development of next year's budget. I caution that the proposal that Mr. Nuzum has put forward, if it were enacted, would be, as Jim said, approximately $100,000 in additional tax exemption, that's not something that can occur within the existing budget. But I have to stress, each and every time additional exemptions are provided, and tax relief is provided, it means that the tax levy is still the same, which means that everybody else is going to be paying more dollars. So, we need to have a look at what the real balancing act has to be, and how the property tax is impacting many different classes of property taxpayers, rather than one specific one in a vacuum, needs to take a look at it. Tonight's agenda, you've got elderly tax abatement for another $326,000. So, I think that this community has accepted its responsibility in terms of providing relief for special classes of taxpayers, and we continue to evaluate that on a yearly basis. But again, unless you're willing to reduce your expenditures by the amount of the exemptions that you're providing, you're increasing the tax burden on other classes of property taxpayers.
Judd, you can come forward. Go ahead, but please, yeah, speak into the microphone again, and state your name.
Again, my name is Jude Nuzum. I guess I don't really understand exactly what's happening with this, with this tax increase, because what we have is a situation where there was a $6,000 exemption, now there's going to be a $500 exemption, which means that there's $5,500 worth of taxes that is going to be going somewhere. Is that not going into the town budget, or is it already spoken for in the town budget, or is it going to the state? Where's that money going? You're not increasing taxes by 100,000 if you do this, if you look at the additional taxes that are being generated by the state's reduction in the exemption, please explain that to me, I don't understand really, because you're getting more money, and you would be sacrificing some of that additional gain, the way I'm reading this, so, perhaps you could explain that?
I will explain it in as simple terms as I can. The town puts a budget together on an annual basis, the budget provides a bottom line of what the expenditures are for the year. That budget then has to have a revenue statement that balances to it. We look at the income that comes from the state, we look at the income that comes from municipal departments, and the remainder is what needs to be collected from property taxes. And again, I'm making this as simple as possible, there's certainly several, probably 70 different revenue sources that we're talking about, but the bottom line is, once you look at all the revenues that you're going to receive, if you're going to have a balanced budget, you raise taxes equal to what the difference is between what those revenues are and what the bottom line expenditure is. For this year, our budget amounted to approximately $71 million, of which approximately, I think we had about $65 million in property tax. The $65 million in the property tax includes the revenue that was being generated from putting the $5,500 back on the roll. It's not going anyplace different. If we had kept the $5,500 off the roll, what we would have done is to have increased the tax rate from $14.09, probably to $14.60. So, every taxpayer would have been paying more on the residential, commercial, and industrial property in town because you had agreed to keep the $6,000 exemption in place. The only money the town gets from the state at this point is on that $500 value, so, it's not as if we're collecting money that isn't there, contrary to what some newspapers are printing. What it comes down to is, we decided that we would put the $5,500 back on the roll, generate the tax revenue from that, rather than to keep it off the roll and increase the taxes on the commercial, industrial, and residential taxpayers. It's six of one, half dozen of the other. If you were paying a tax rate at $14.60, let's say, and I don't recall what the exact number was, you would be paying that on your assessment value. Now, you're paying at $14.19 because it's going through the motor vehicles. So, that's where the difference is, it's not that we've taken in money, or that we're collecting money on behalf of the state, it's really a question of how we were going to set up the tax roll. When we put the advertisements out for full disclosure on what the budget was, what the dollar amounts were, and what we anticipated the projected tax rates to be, we anticipated at that point that we would lose all of the $6,000, and that people would pay at the tax rate of $18.71. Nothing was hidden, but there is no additional dollars coming into the town because the $1.1 million more that was being collected in motor vehicle taxes, and again, the numbers are away from me at this point, I can get exact numbers, is coming through the tax roll, it's just that it's coming through the motor vehicle component, rather than the component dealing with the residential, the residential, commercial, or industrial base. So, that's what we're looking at, so I hope that answers your question.
It does, it does, but in terms of the impact, the rate, you said went from 14.19 to 14.60?
$14.19.
It would have been 14.60 had you not included that revenue.
I'm looking at the detail now, it would be $14.65 if we had done like Ace Greenwich had done.
Yeah.
But, again, what you're doing is you're looking at what the bottom line tax levy is, and you're distributing where the dollars will come in from the different tax-paying classes, and what we looked at was that we were in a position where we were going to collect point, we're collecting $4.1 million from the motor vehicles with the $500 exemption in place. If we had kept the $6,000 off the roll, we would have collected only $2.1 million. But if we were only collecting $2.1 million from the motor vehicles, we would have had to collect $2.1 million more from the residential rate at $14.19. That's why the residential rate would have been $14.65. The concern that we had with putting it on to the residential roll was, one, with the revaluation, there was a, there was, across classes, there was only an 11% reduction on commercial-based and industrial-based properties, there was an 18% reduction average on the residentials. If we had gone with the 14.65, we would have seen the commercial and industrial base hit with additional tax requirements because, one, their ratio was lower than what the average was statewide, and secondly, because they'd be picking up a much larger share of what had been lost with the motor vehicle income. So, it was a conscious decision that was made. Could it have been done where we just simply said, we're changing the rate from, to 14.65? We could have, and we could have still left the exemption on for the motor vehicles. The question is, would that have also been fair to all of the property taxpayer classes? And that's why we advertised it, and it was discussed at each budget meeting that we held.
Well, thanks for the explanation. I, it does seem to me that this is worthy of consideration for next year, number one, and number two, if there are 1,000 or 1,200 veterans in the town, and if you look at the population of the town, relief to the veterans of $100 of taxes would probably add a penny or two pennies to the tax rate. Do you confirm that or not? But I think it's worthy of consideration for next year, it seems like it's about 1/40th of the population that is getting this break, so, that would be, you know, that would add an extra penny on to everybody's taxes.
It has to be passed on to somebody else.
No, I...
So, it's not really going to erase it, it'll erase it for them, I just, I want to make sure that you understand that.
I understand it has to be...
That's going to be passed on to somebody else, so, again, at 1,205, and we're paying $155,000 of abatement really for taxes with the veterans right now, and the elderly on top of it, we're looking at the big picture of everybody, and we'll certainly take it into consideration, but it's...
Yeah, I would think that would be very appropriate to take it into consideration next year, and if you don't want, if you don't want to give it to veterans, I mean, that's fine, I mean, I suggested it because I think they've earned it, and I'm willing to waive mine if you think that it's a vested interest, but there are a lot of veterans out there that are to the wall right now, and they can use the additional help, and a lot of Vietnam veterans especially, who have had tough times for a long time.
Sure.
And, you know, I think it's a worthy group, and I think most of the people in this town would pay an extra penny on their assessment to help veterans. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, do we have a motion to approve, or will we place, what we would like to do with this?
Shall we place it on file with the notation that we will look at it again next year? We will be sure to study this next year.
And is there a second?
At the budget time, is that what?
Seconding that, Jim, is that...
Yes, yes, I'll second that.
Moved to second, and any further discussion? Hearing none? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, Steve, and I don't mean to direct this to you, but I look at this elderly abatement program as an absolute fantastic, wonderful investment for this community, and for our taxpayers in this community, because all you need, just doing the quick math here, I just imagine 20 homes out of 234 applicants, I don't know how many homes that represents, but just 20 homes, if those turned over because they couldn't afford our help with the tax credit, at a $17,000 per student bill, if one, just one child moved into that, there's your $340,000, I know 80% 20, let's not get to that. The point is, this is a great investment, these are people who have earned this, these are very valuable people, this community, and what a great investment that we've made by doing this senior abatement program, and I have the same agreement with our veterans, so, I think this is a very small amount of money, and you can play the equations all we want here, but I think this is how we have to approach this issue, this is a great investment for this community, for people who have earned this credit.
All right, so, is there any other discussion?
My only question would be, you know, what would have to be done with the General Assembly? Would it be, you know, a resolution that would be required?
No, it would actually be a specific amendment to the existing statute for veteran exemptions. You look at that statute now, and it goes on for many, many pages, because each community has done something a little different. What the council would do is pass a resolution requesting the General What the council would do is pass a resolution requesting the General Assembly to our local legislators to introduce the legislation based on whatever specific action that you would want. Then the bill would go to the Committee on Veteran Affairs, the Committee on Veteran Affairs would then hold hearings on it, they would then endorse it, revise it, or say no to it, and it would go onto the floor for the General Assembly approvals in both chambers. It would have to be approved by both chambers and go to the governor for signature, or wait the ten days if it would pass without his signature. So that's the legislative process, but before you get to the point of putting a resolution together, you need to determine specifically what it is that you want the legis, what you want the tax relief to be, and on what basis.
And it really seems as though the timeframe for next year's budget does not match with the General Assembly. I mean, do you see the timeframe matching together?
I think that if you were asking for that type of legislation, I do not see that it would be denied. I think that what we would do, if the council asked for that, we would prepare the budget document, assuming that instead of a hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand dollars next year, it was going to be worth two-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand dollars, or whatever the estimate is. You know, whether you went with six thousand, whether you went with three thousand, obviously would make a difference, and we would have to develop the budget accordingly. And based on that, we would have, the balancing of what the tax levy would be necessary would have to be considered. So, I mean, at the, if the council comes up with a specific plan, I can provide cost estimates on each of those, and once you're comfortable with a specific idea, it could be forwarded to the local legislators for introduction. And you'd want introduction in both chambers, both at the House and the Senate level.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just one more, Kathy. Yes, Steve, if the General Assembly has to face a supplemental budget issue, this won't change the enabling need that we would have to ask for.
It depends on whether something like that would be considered as a necessity. If you recall, last year, we had them pass a special bill for us as far as bonding was concerned. It's not out of the realm of possibility, it's really up to the Speaker's office or the Senate President as to how much they're going to allow the floodgates to open on any type of legislation that would be considered if there was a short session.
Yeah, and I concur with that, and I certainly like everyone to know out there, if I remember the comparisons with other cities and towns in the state, I mean, South Kingston is very generous, but as I said earlier, I think it's well-earned by those seniors and those veterans.
That's correct.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, students, I can't get this vote in, I don't think. Hold that, Jim, go ahead.
I'm wondering if the council is in agreement that this is something that should be done next year, if now isn't the time to start the ball rolling for the legislature, because if they're going to consider it, you know, you need to go on record as asking them to consider it, and that needs to start happening now to get it done for next year even, because if you decide to do it for next year, and it's not approved, then it'll be the year after that. So I mean, it's a question of whether you want to do it or not, and whether you want to start the ball rolling now or not, and include it in next year's budget or in the budget for 2012, 2013. So, you know, I think that the time, if you're going to do it, is soon.
I believe Polly made the.
I think my motion was that we place on file and. So it would go, yeah. Did you hear that, Mr. Newsom?
Yes. Yeah, Polly made that motion, it passed part of her motion to look at it for the next budget session. No, they're not in session now anyways, it would be for us to start looking at it as part of our.
When we start looking at our budget, that will be something we look at.
You just start around the January time. January?
And the General Assembly isn't in session right now anyway, so we would have to wait till they go back in session to even start the footwork on this kind of thing.
Okay. Jim?
And I guess they're, I believe they're going to be in, called back in session in the fall. I'm not going to put my fellow councilors on the spot, but I've always believed that this is a program that should be enlarged, as well as the senior abatement program. I don't know whether it'll be re-elected or not, that's always guesswork, but I would certainly go on record earlier than later that this is an area of the budget that we need to address, and a sector of our community that I think is very important.
Okay. Any other discussion? Anybody? Bearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next is comments from interested citizens. So if anybody would like to come forward, now is the time.
Good evening. David Caprio. Just if I could comment quickly on the previous discussion. After the elections, we are permitted to put in legislation for January prior to when we go back. So if you were to get something to one of the town state representatives, even in November or December, we are allowed to have it drafted, at least drafted, and then have it introduced right away on the first day. So if there is something ready to go on the first day, it could be introduced on that first day. So the legislative staff is working there throughout that time, so. And I just wanted to give an update into some laws that passed this year that directly affect, I think, the quality of life that we have down here. Three in particular, one I was proud to sponsor, which made it illegal, the governor actually, this actually became law, made it illegal for minors to provide alcohol to other minors, believe it or not, prior to this year. That was not against the law. It was against the law for an adult, as we all know, to provide it, or for minors to possess it, but not to provide it to other minors. So in the college areas, you know, somebody, if the police responded to a scene where there was a bunch of kegs, and they asked whose beer that was, and there was a bunch of other minors at the residence, it was not against the law for that minor to provide it to the other minors until just recently. So that's a new law that went into effect this year. Also, safety on the roads, we had two significant laws passed this year, one of which I was a sponsor of, the other one also came through the Judiciary Committee, which I chair. One was unfortunately as a result of the tragedy down in Charleston with Colin Foote, and that is, people who have multiple traffic offenses are now eligible to have their license revoked by the Traffic Tribunal. They never had that authority before. They do now, and it also expanded the length of time that the Traffic Tribunal can suspend somebody's license under certain circumstances. So that goes towards safer roads. And also, it is now a felony if somebody whose license is suspended for an alcohol-related offense, if they're caught driving while their license is suspended for that alcohol offense drunk again. So if you're suspended for drunk driving and you're caught not only driving, but driving drunk again, previously that second charge was a misdemeanor, it is now a felony. That's, apparently there have been, there was a high-profile incident that that happened, but believe it or not, the law was introduced prior to that incident that happened up in Providence with the restaurant owner there, East Providence, I think it was. But the law was already in place, and it wouldn't, it doesn't affect that particular case, but in any future cases, if you're caught drunk driving while your license is suspended for drunk driving, it's now a felony. So those are three, I just wanted to bring to the council's attention, three good laws that passed this year affecting our safety on the roads and our, you know, our quality of life that we enjoy down here, even with the universities surrounding us, and sometimes the issues that come along with that.
Okay.
Any questions?
David, if I may, do you know where our borrowing stands on the unemployment insurance fund? Weren't we going north of two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred million dollars at this point? We borrowing from the Fed?
I'm sorry, Jim, I don't have that information off the top of my head. I can get it to you, as early as tomorrow.
Yeah, I read something in the paper a few weeks ago, I bring it up because Congress has yet to pass that relief, and I know we're having hundreds of families weekly, you know, going off the rolls. And I know our debt is near three-hundred million, but I keep reading article after article, and I know Steve has mentioned it a number of times too, that we're still, the government still has better than three-hundred million dollars of the stimulus money. I don't know where it is, but has not been spent. I can't imagine why this one area that jobs is of the most, of the greatest concern for this nation, why in the world we're not spending that on the unemployment insurance and helping the various states out? Do you, I just, Steve, have you followed any of this? Am I just, is this?
I don't have any information at this point on it.
Well, I guess I'll have to contact Washington. But really, something's wrong, because I know the two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred million dollars the state has borrowed, we have to pay that back with interest. Fortunately, interest is nothing, but I just see that, you know, the government's sitting on a ton of stimulus money that they've yet to spend. Now, maybe it'll come later this summer, but, you know, to put these families in the state through this kind of angst is really kind of cruel.
If there is a specific figure you'd like for me to get, just give me the question, I'll get it for you as soon as I can get appropriate person up at the State House.
All right, thank you.
David, I just wanted to ask you about the illegal for minors to provide alcohol to other minors. Is that mostly like for the kids from eighteen to twenty-one? Is that what we're calling, those kids providing to kids under?
That's correct. The original bill.
Because I mean, if you've got, I mean, two kids who are like sixteen, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what it was for.
The original legislation, the original legislation was, it just, actually, I believe it just removed one word, or added a word actually, into the current statute. But the House version that I sponsored made it a misdemeanor for any minor to provide it to any other minor regardless of age. There was some debate on the floor about it, based upon the question that you just asked. What happens to somebody who's thirteen or fourteen who, you know, takes one out of parents' refrigerator or whatnot?
Yeah.
The answer was that the courts already deal with that.
Right.
Minors, they would go to family court rather than, it wouldn't be a crime.
So this is that, those gap kids is what we call them, like between eighteen and twenty-one and.
When it went to the Senate, however, the Senate changed it from a misdemeanor to a civil violation, just a fine. And they put an age restriction on it from eighteen to twenty-one. So they lessened it a little bit as a first step to move forward due to some of those concerns that you raised. So the bill did go through, not in its original form, but it is on the books that, you know, it's a civil penalty rather than a misdemeanor crime at this stage, from eighteen to twenty-one. So below, I guess technically below eighteen, it's still not illegal.
Still handled the way it always was, I would say.
Still handled the way it was prior to.
Through the family court. Yeah, I just was wondering if, what the age they were talking about, but thank you.
Okay.
Kath?
I just have my chamber updates.
Dave, are you done? I didn't know, it was a chamber update.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks. First of all, the chamber is now again open on weekends, so that's nice to know on Saturdays and Sundays. And kudos to Ladies Night last Thursday, to all of the participants on the businesses. And they're having another event in August, August 12th. It's Couples Night. So if couples would like to have dinner in Wakefield, and then there's going to be the performance, the play Rumors by the Contemporary Theatre Company under the tent in Sorgetucket Park at seven o'clock. So that seems interesting. And just to reiterate, the gift certificates, Keep the Shopping in Town, which helps us, and Joe Icoy was gracious enough to give me a stack of maps that I'll be placing downstairs, South Kingston maps. And the trolley, fourteen stops, so if you see this in any businesses in the windows, that is a trolley stop. And last but not least is the Second Annual Golf Ball Drop. There's, it's Sunday, July 18th, at one-thirty at the Thirty-second South County Hot Air Balloon Festival in the URI Athletic Fields. And the prizes, five prizes, the first prize is fifteen-hundred dollars, and then four five-hundred-dollar prizes. So five dollars for a golf ball at the South Kingston Chamber. Thanks.
I bought mine.
I've got mine.
Look at me at Ladies Night.
I would like to have one of those stops, I should have thought of that, but it's outside my office door.
It's not too late, Jim.
But also Couples Night, Couples Night might not be the smartest idea, a lot of men might keep women from spending what they might like to spend. So that may have to be re-clawed next year.
Now, any men that I saw at Ladies Night, I made sure that they told their wives it's unlimited spending, right, girls?
That's right, oh, yes. That's right. I don't know many women that will be stopped by the husband on spending. Jams, in this day and age.
Are you making a statement?
It's a lost cause, I know. I know.
So if that's it from the.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and I guess we move on now to the town managers' report.
Few items to provide update on. On July 6th, the town of South Kingston, Narragansett, and the United Water District placed a mandatory no-outdoor-water-use ban into effect for the three systems. That action was taken based on the demand for water, outpacing the ability for the United Water System to be able to produce and to meet that demand. That ban has been amended as of today, where the outdoor water ban will now be a limited ban. There'll be no outdoor water use weekends from six PM on Fridays till midnight on Sunday, and watering, outdoor watering uses will be allowed on an odd-even basis. That would be people with even house number addresses would be able to order on even days, odd numbers on the odd day. So that we would provide people with an opportunity to be able to take care of their lawns, take care of their gardens, yet at the same time recognize that there is a critical need to ensure that the supply is not outpaced by the demand. That amended water restriction for outdoor use will continue in effect until further notice. I suspect if the summer continues as a dry summer, we will probably see that extended all the way through the month of August. I also want to report that last week, after the three-day Fourth of July weekend, the State Health Department instituted an advisory of water boil requirement. That was instituted at about four-thirty on July 6th and continued through four-thirty on July 8th. That restriction, or advisory opinion to boil water before it was used for consumption has now been removed. So the only thing we have in place with the three water systems, and again, what we found in the past summers is that it's confusing if South Kingston had an odd-even restricted use, and Narragansett had a full, that people were confused. We felt it was better to act as a region, and United Water has agreed to cooperate with us. So the three systems will be the same. Police in South Kingston will be reviewing for compliance, and contact will be made with property owners that refuse to deal with the prohibition on the outdoor water use. I think it's important for people to realize that this is also a public safety issue. If we do not have adequate water pressure within our water systems to be able to service hydrants, we do not have an adequate fire protection capability without pumpers, which could delay response for fire protection. So the water is clean, the water has no problems as far as need for boil, but the outdoor water ban on an odd-even basis is necessary, and one that I think all three water systems are taking very seriously, and we're asking the cooperation of all of the customers on those public water systems to heed to the requirement for the odd-even use of water for outdoor purposes. Unless there's questions from the council on any of the other items that have been provided, I'll pass the, to the solicitor.
Kathy?
Jim? Go ahead.
Steve, yeah, many thanks to you, Andy, and I thought you guys did a great job getting out with the information you had, which is much.
out with the information you had, which is much information to the community as possible. In the future, do we start guessing weather forecasts? Do we just assume that three-day weekends? What can we do just to not put ourselves in the situation again? What's our best formula?
Well, I think we're looking at a couple of things. I think that what we've seen is the need for the uneven rationing on a year-to-year basis. It may be a case that it needs to be instituted in advance of us seeing a, a supply over demand, or a demand over supply proposition. I think that we may need to look at that in the future. The one that has me more concerned is a protocol needs to be developed, probably on a statewide basis, to deal with boil water advisories. Because while the notice may be provided through the Department of Health, there is no specific protocol to the user area as to how that information is distributed other than through press release. What we instituted, once the Health Department provided us with the notice, and again, that was 4:30, I think, on Tuesday, was we contacted South County Hospital, we contacted nursing homes, we put out a reverse 911 call, and we went through a, a series of, of contacts. The Chamber of Commerce was also kind enough to use their email system to be able to get the information out to the business community. What we need to do is to get that type of protocol in place and make sure that the, that if those type of advisories do go into effect, how do we best get the information out to the public? We use sign boards on the street, we use signs on each of the major arteries going into the South Shore area. So I think that we did a very good job in terms of getting the information out. I think that in the future, we may look at having that as a, as a protocol in place so that it can be exercised in a more rapid fashion than just simply the way we dealt with it. Also, it would be great if the Health Department would contact the town in advance of contacting the newspapers, but the, you know, we need to work with all of those different pieces and make sure from a health and safety perspective that we, we get that message out. I think we did more than we needed to do, but I also felt that it was more important from, from South Kingston's perspective to make sure as many people knew about it, and if they wished to get further information, how they would get that information through the Health Department, which we also provided through our website.
Steve, it also went through the School Department on the listserv. I got it on the computer and on the phone, so that was another good avenue that you used.
We worked, yeah, we worked with the School Department because they've got the reverse 911 capability that we, as a municipality, don't have at this point. It is something that we are going to have to look at in the future to be able to provide those type of notices.
Kath?
Yes, Ella, go ahead.
And I'm glad to hear say that, Steve, because I know when I was at the Wakefield Mall, I was asked, you know, how is it that the town could possibly in the future get that message out like the School Department, you know, put out? So if there's a way, and I don't know what the cost would be, but if there's a way that that could be something looked at in the future, I think that would be wonderful.
We're, we're studying what the costs are. Some of the concerns are that some of the systems that are available, if they're not specialized, like with the School Department is getting the call numbers from the parents.
Right.
But if you're dealing with a database, many times the database are landline-based only. So the only way you get cell phones into that is to have people be able to register those phones for contact purposes. So that way, it diminishes the effectiveness of the, of the calls, and what we're seeing on a, a year-to-year basis is less land-based phones, even in, many households are going without the land-based phone at this point and using just cells. So we're looking at a number of different options with that, and we will be back to the council on that, hopefully within the next several months.
Right. And the person that, you know, brought it to my attention really was looking for a land-based thing, and I, and I, it got me thinking, you know, how many people stayed in that day because of the heat, you know, and a lot of elderly that possibly, you know, would not get out. So that's, you know, that's what this person was really looking for. So I'm, I'm glad to hear say that that's something that we'll possibly, we'll be looking at in the future.
It has our attention.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Steve and Andy.
Yeah.
Because Steve was on vacation, had to come in, but Andy was, you know, here, holding up the, a lot happened that day, very late in the day, and, you know, I do agree that the Health Department really needs to contact the town. If something comes out of that, hopefully that letter will be written to them before they go to the press with something like that, too, so we can be a little bit more, you know, prepared. Test results from, from the Health Department, whether any-
They're all clean.
Clean, yeah, so.
You know, just, the Health Department works on a protocol based on New England states. Whenever the water pressure in a public system goes below 20 pounds per square inch, they are at a position where they would provide a boil advisory. An advisory isn't a mandatory boil order, but it's an advisory saying that there could be something that has got into the water system based on the lack of pressure within the, within that public system. So they put that forward. We then were able to have both Narragansett, South Kingston, and United had water samples that were taken at various times from different locations within the three systems. And again, remember that the only supplier at this point of water for all three systems is United, where Narragansett has some water that they purchased from North Kingston as well, but neither South Kingston or Narragansett have their own source of supply that we're exercising. Everything is, is a purchased water. So the water pressure concerns, for the most part, were isolated to the Tower Hill area. In fact, at one point, they were so severe that there were homes in the area that had absolutely no water pressure available to them. And that water pressure has been rebuilt since that time. But the Health Department's decision was not based on anything specific within United's water distribution system, but rather based on a protocol that said, if this threshold is not met, there could be backflow from the, the residential or commercial customer that could provide pollution within the public supply. So they weren't finding that there was something wrong, they were taking advanced proactive steps, and that's why it was an advisory order. If it was a boil, a boil water requirement, it would have been a different set of circumstances where I think they would have had to have had some type of biological proof of, of contamination. But the, I think the Health Department did the job that they should be doing. I just think that what we have to do is to define, once they do their job, whose job is it to ensure that critical populations are properly notified on a timely basis? And we went so far as to contact the grocery stores, the three principals in, in South Kingston and Narragansett, and suggesting to them that they get additional supplies of public, of water because there would be a run on the water, which our only reason to do that wasn't to generate business for them, but to ensure that the, that, that the residents were inconvenienced as little as possible for those that were concerned about the, the advisory on the boil, boil water. So there was a lot of steps that were taken. I think it was a good exercise. We did see during the Fourth of July weekend, on the South Shore system alone, demand of over a million gallons a day on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and Monday. Once the order was put in for the no outdoor use, as well as less intensive uses because it wasn't the weekend, the following weekend, our demands were down to 600,000 gallons. So you can see that there's considerably less water demand. Narragansett was experiencing similar situations, and so too was United. So we were, we were able to rebuild the pressure in the water tanks, because I'm not sure if people are aware, but when we pump from the wells, you pump into the, into the tanks, the tanks is what provides the pressure, because the elevation of the water in the tank has to be higher than the, than the house that it's going to serve to be able to provide adequate pressure. And when the amount of water in the tank goes below a certain level, the pressure within the rest of the system is diminished. So that's the problem that United ran into as they were trying to distribute water to Wakefield proper, and also service Middle Bridge via Torrey Road and Narragansett via Torrey Road. So those type of things are things that we should have a pretty good handle on what's going to happen on a year-to-year basis, particularly with the holiday weekends, and we may have to take advanced, advanced step. The only concern you have is that if you take the advanced step and it wasn't necessary, that people complain that they were limited on something that they didn't need to be limited on. So it's a Monday morning quarterback-type situation.
Okay, well, thank you. If you're done, Steve, is there anything from the Town Solicitors' Report?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have appointments. Yes, July, or else.
I'd like to nominate Beth Bailey to the Board of Trustees of the South Kingston Library for a three-year term that would run till 7/13. And also William Colin McCullough for the same term, that would run till July 2013.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so that's the only ones that we have for reappointments tonight. Okay. So next, we move on to, we're so efficient, we did all the new business items up to D, and we're moving on to new business item E, a resolution authorizing an award of contract to WB Mason Corp., Incorporated, Company Incorporated, 99 Bald Hill Road, Cranston, Rhode Island, for general office supplies, standard paper, and toner based on the Rhode Island Master Price Agreement, 105 through June 30th, 2011, and it's further described in the memorandum from a financial controller to the Town Manager dated June 28th, 2011, office supply bids.
We've had good experience with the Master Price Agreement, would recommend it continue.
Okay, any questions, Steve?
I move approval of new business resolution E.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution authorizing the tax assessor to abate taxes for persons participating in the elderly tax abatement program in the amount of $326,229.87. Said abatements are in accordance with the document entitled Elderly Exemption Verification List and is further described in the memorandum from the tax assessor to the Town Manager dated June 18th, entitled Elderly Tax Abatement Program. Steve?
The Town's elderly tax abatement program provides assistance with the tax credit for incomes on a sliding scale basis. Persons with less than $13,000 worth of income for the year can get a maximum credit of up to $2,100. The sliding scale goes all the way up to $37,000, where credit between $35,000 and $37,000 is limited to $450. Again, the objective of the program is to provide the greatest tax relief for those earning the least amount of money in an effort to be able to protect them from, in terms of keeping their home. When we look at the program in total, what we're looking at is an average assessment for all of the participants in the program, which is about 227 so far this year. Average assessment of around $244,000, average tax bill of about $3,460, and the tax, average tax credit that was given per account is approximately $1,437. So the net taxes that are being paid by the program participants is around $2,022. I mention this on a yearly basis, we continue to take applications, even though the application period closed as of March 15th, on a yearly basis. We will continue to bring eligible applications that do come in to the council and ask for further consideration to provide additional relief should those applications be filed late. We find in some cases that family members have not filled out the paperwork, and we do go to quite an, quite a, quite a number of steps to try to ensure that as many people are reached as possible that would be eligible for the program. This year's overall cost, or I should say, the initial cost of the $326,000, $326,000, we're looking at that being down from the $330,000 in the current year, but again, I think that by the time we get through September or October, we, we'll be matching that $330 number again this year. And that's up, the $330 was up from $321 the prior year. So we continue, we continue to see good participation in the program, and I think we're providing necessary relief for those taxpayers that may be forced into selling the homes if they weren't receiving this type of consideration. It's a broad-based program that provides the greatest value to those with the least means to pay.
Any questions for Steve regarding this?
Move.
Or Gene, since we have Gene, who's been waiting patiently. Who puts this together every year. Gene, you do a good job. No? Jim? Did you have something? I didn't know if you said it.
Oh, no, I was just going to move approval then of the new business resolution F.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to new business item H, a resolution authorizing an award of bid for drainage concrete curb retaining wall materials to the following bidders at unit prices bid, and is further described in the memorandum from the Public Service Director to the Town Manager dated July 6, 2010, entitled Bid Recommendation. And it is as presented on the agenda. And I guess we'll move into item A, too, the award to reinforced concrete pipe for the following bidder at the unit prices, and further described in the memorandum from the Public Service Director to the Town Manager, also on July 6. Yes, that's it.
Recommend award as presented with the various companies that are listed for the different materials. I'd recommend this on both item H and item I. Item I is similar, where this is the award to, to vendors dealing with reinforced concrete pipe, as well as the drainage materials under item H. I'd ask the council to consider to approve both as detailed in John's memo.
I move approval of new business item H and I.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to James J. Jeremiah and Associates Incorporated, 272 West Exchange Street, Suite 201 Providence, for wastewater engineering services to perform Silver Lake Pump Station construction management services, and amount not to exceed $16,880, and is further described from the memorandum from the Public Service Director to the Town Manager dated July 6, Silver Lake Pump Station Generator. Steve?
Recommendation is for award to the engineering services and construction management to Jim Jeremiah and Associates. This is the lowest qualified bidder. I think the most important thing, too, is that he had done the initial spec development for the, the generator that the council authorized a water bid on last month. So I think he can do the best job for us. We were looking to do this in-house, however, when we began taking closer look at it, Bernard was concerned, and so too was John, that the outside services were probably warranted to provide better protection of the town and the employees that would be using that in a future time.
Okay. Absolutely. Any questions for Steve? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Go ahead, Karen. Motion to approve new business item J.
Okay. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is item M, a resolution authorizing a water bid to Atlantic Elevator South Company Incorporated, 1900 Fall River Avenue, Seacock, Mass., for full service contracts for elevator service and maintenance for the Kingston Free and Peacedale Libraries, for a five-year term commencing August 1st, 2010, through July 30th, 2015, and the total contract amount not to exceed $15,200, and is further described in the memorandum from the library director to the Town Manager dated July 8th, 2010. Steve?
As Shirley Long's presentation, they've gone out to bid lowest qualified bidder as recommended for a water on the five-year contract.
Do you have a motion?
I move approval of new business item M.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 9:09.